Okay, it's six oh one, I'm calling this special meeting to the general city councils of order. Do you have a form present? So, can you pause it?
No, sir.
A public forum, so we skip that part. Okay, moving in, we're going to gen item number one, discuss the center possible action on a resolution relative to Johnson County Special Utility District's request to amend chapter seventy two sixteen to the Texas Special Utility District laws code. I'm gonna allow Josh to go ahead and make his presentation.
Sure, I'll keep brief because Glenn Walden told us. Okay, I just brought some, uh, just a little bit of information about the district. Have Del right there, St. Clair good at presenting this, or she gives presentations. A lot of people, I'm sure y'all do, but a lot of people really don't realize how big we are, how many people we service and and really this, what we're responsible for entirely, so.
Sure.
Thank you. So really, that's just a few stats, I'm not gonna go through them, but I'll just mention that we are three hundred and twenty square miles. Um, so I brought a map of our area. I'll show y'all that as well. Y'all probably familiar, this is our C C N map, that's who we service, or we're responsible to service if they're not there today. So you can see Godly, Joshua, Cleveland here, cut out, Rio, um, Alvarado. So just for an idea, a lot of our older system is gonna be on the south side, it's gonna be mostly serviced by your wells um, without any access to surface water, so it'll be a lot more of your rural population. As you work north, a lot of the newer Godly stuff, Joshua, you start getting more urban. That's also gonna be on this side. Um, that for all your big subdivisions are coming in, it's really populated areas. Uh, let's just, as an idea of what our system looks like, so it's very diverse. So you see your urban population, you have big subdivisions, um, very populated, a lot of people, you have the urban community, it's one house every ten miles, you have some areas that's county roads, where you have houses that are half acre acre lots, you know, so so very diverse. Um, recently, a lot of the abduction, what we've seen, or I guess let me back up. What we're trying to accomplish with this resolution support, we're trying to change our legislature, legislature and the special issue code. First of all, we're trying to get uh, an exemption from T T Q's. Uh, really their review or their approval on our bonds, whenever we do remedy bond for projects. And we're also trying to get an exemption from them supervising us whenever we do large projects and improvements to the system. So, really, the reason we're doing that is it's, it's really a duplication of what we have to do. Cause we have to follow certain rules and submit that to T C Q anyway. But it's really getting their review on the front end, and it costs the rate paid about twenty five to fifty thousand to do that submittal to T C Q to get approval, it also takes well, at a minimum, it takes three months. So it's really inhibits us from being able to go and do our projects and get them done. So that's the first part of the legislative change that we're thinking. The next piece is doing the single member districts. I don't know that the J S A board will entirely desire to do those or not, but having this in the statute gives us the ability to do that. And so when we started, I hope now Dever, the system is how large it is. Uh, you know, the purpose of this is to ensure that we have the appropriate representation for each special type in our system. So if we grow and get more urban on the north side, the rural population, representation down there, you know, there is some concern that when the elections come up, that they won't get the votes, they're not gonna know the people, they're not a part of, you know, there's gonna be no representation for that rural community that and so another diverse group is the city of Joshua. And y'all are different than a lot of the system, because y'all have wastewater too. So if we all have the appropriate representation to have an opinion, you know, wastewater plus waters. So, uh, that's really the purpose of that, is to make sure that each group in our system had representation and had a vote in place on the board. And that, that's really the goal we're trying to accomplish with the legislation change. Scott, do you have anything to add or about this?
No, and one of the things, when you look at the way the enacting legislations put in place, a lot of the, uh, Mustang and some of the other large S U D's, uh, we use that as a template, try to modernize that uh, to make it more in line with how other S U D's are operating, so a lot of it's just a lot of housekeeping and cleanup on that. Uh, to echo what Josh was saying as well. Um, you know, the, the intent is to give us something that we can better represent uh, our rate payers, including Joshua, which is a big part, I think Josh mentioned a very important part, you get to be one of the most unique rate payers, uh, because you've got sewer and water utility, so you know, that comes in to uh, give us a lot of flexibility to be sure that you have adequate representation on future boards.
Any questions?
No, sir.
Bye.
Um, no.
Excellent.
No.
Uh huh. David? How are the districts gonna be set up for the single voting?
So I think the, the most appropriate way to do that is we would have to get some sort of firm for someone to do a study on what the population looks like in the different areas and get it set up. I don't, I don't, I don't have the skills to personally set that up. So I imagine we would maintain a couple at large members and then look at population and uh, the nature of, of the area and break that up.
Keep trying.
Yeah.
So the process that you would go through is gonna be a very public, very time consuming process. The, uh, the board would have to in a public forum say, hey, we want to explore this and go through that. You have Department of Justice approvals that you have to get. I don't know if y'all are a single member district, but you have every ten years, you have a review and you gotta go through that, then you've gotta go out uh, and get that information from the public. Ensure that everything is balanced out correctly, so there's a lot of steps and a lot of public input that would be received before you would get to that point. And again, I, I, I think it's just giving the flexibility in the future for the board to be able to figure out how to best represent the rate payers. Doesn't mean that they're necessarily going to do that and get away from the at large on that, but there's a lengthy process that would be called publicly before you would get to that point of how you would divide that up, uh, and a lot of that would be public input as well.
Would the, would the customers, the, the neighbors or whatever, have any say on whether you go to these or not, or is it just sent to the the board's what makes the decision?
I understand it's a support call on it gets approved or whatever. So I, I honestly haven't worked out all the details, this, we're coming up on the, I think it's the eighty ninth session. We have certain deadlines, this was something that, like Scott said, other districts have done, and I think Mustang and Rocket did it in two thousand and eleven. And we didn't do it. Um, I'm not sure how they managed their directors, but it was, you know, we get it in, if we have the ability to do it, then the directors can make their choice on what they feel is adequate representation of this system.
So, this legislation that you're proposing is just for Johnson County SUD, or is it for all SUDs?
Just for the county SUD.
So each one gets its own legislative code or red.
Each one has its own enacting uh, ordinance that, that is there. I can't explain to you why Johnson County SUD was written the way it was originally. I was not involved in that process. But I can tell you, it's extremely cumbersome and is not in keeping with the way the majority of the other SUDs are, are done. That's why a lot of the housekeeping, trying to clean some of that up. Especially dealing a lot with getting rid of the redundancy, I mean, it costs the district twenty five to fifty thousand every time you get a T C Q review uh, process in place. That was the main impetus for the board directing us to get this corrected. Um, tremendous amount of waste and cost and duplication. And then it takes six to nine months, which is slowing uh, progress down as well. I know, I know you guys are seeing it too, we're seeing tremendous growth and development opportunities uh, for Johnson County, and so being able to be nimble and adjust to that is, is very important. And right now, we can't, we're at the beck and call of T C Q on mundane, routine things, and so that, that's a big impetus for that, but to answer your question specifically, Mayor, each one has its own uh, enacting provision, uh, but they are more uniformed with what we're proposing the legislature change ours to, that's more of the norm than what we have.
Within their legislative enacting stuff and everything, did they specify how they were going to set up their single member districts and what all was gonna go through and, and all, in other words, is there something standing in stone? This is how it's going to be. And then for, for you to change how you select to do the, the single member districts or whatever, it has to go through the legislature again?
No, um, so if you're talking about the other, like Mustang, some of the others, that, that language, our language that we're proposing is the same as Mustang's language. Uh, we use that exact same language. So you would not have to go back through the legislature and go through that process of, you know, but you do have a lot of public uh, processes and steps to be able to go to single member districts that you have to go through. It's not something that happens one and done, uh, it's a process that you go through, but to Josh's point, the way the uh, language is written, it would be a board decision whether to go to single member districts. But then once you go down that path, there's a lot of steps you've gotta go through, uh, a lot of public input on that.
On the vote?
No, not necessarily.
Not necessarily, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's oversight, like I said, Department of Justice to make certain that you're representing minority votes, you're not diluting minority votes. And then how you set those districts up, and there, there's a whole process you go through that. But it doesn't require a, a public rate payer vote or the legislature, as I understand it.
Question I have, what are y'all asking of this?
So, what we're asking is just for approval on the resolution of support that you support Johnson County SUD's efforts to do the T C T C Q uh, exception intervention, plus to do the single member districts.
Okay, now, you said something, you looked at us about your board will side that later. How do we know if we go along with this and test what they're on bit?
So, and ultimately, if y'all don't support this, it can still go through the legislature for uh, we this is to help us get it through and to help the Senator and then the um, House of Representatives, Helen, to, to support the bill. But ultimately, if y'all don't support it, then we would still um, try to push the bill through for approval.
The Senator King had asked for us to go and, and uh, any cities that are impacted to kind of get some feedback on that. There's a process that we go through, and we did that with publications and newspapers and all that, but we all know you know, it gets in the paper and who sees that, really reads that. Uh, but they asked for us to see if we could obtain some resolutions of support with what we're doing. And you can do a lot of different things, I know that the council has some heartburn about the uh, the, the way the single member district votes and so forth. Uh, but if you're comfortable with the other provisions at a minimum, we would respectfully request that you have a resolution that supports all the others except for the single member district voting. Uh, but we want to assure you that um, that the single member district process is gonna be open, transparent, we go through that. Um, and that's kind of up to, to you guys as far as what you do on the resolution, but uh, we already have the bill down in Austin, ready to propose, uh, but I think that uh, we were tasked with going and, and talking to you. Uh, I will tell you, you're the only city that, that we're asking for a resolution of support, because you guys are uniquely affected by it. And we value that partnership in the future, so I think that was the direction with the, with the board and the, the G M was to, to come and talk to you about it. Certainly apologize for missing the last council, was not aware it was on there, or, or, and we really do appreciate y'all uh, agreeing to do this, that, that means a lot to us.
Hey, that's like something. One thing, think about is, you know, right now, we don't even have places, I mean, you sit there, you're like in seat one, seat two. But basically, if, if whenever we have an election, it's just, if we have two seats up, it's the two highest vote getters. Yet, it's not necessary, there might be five people running, there might be two people running. But this would allow, even if we went all at large, at least you'd say, okay, I'm gonna run against this particular person for that seat. If this doesn't go through, then everything's gonna be just like it is, there won't be any change. So I think it's very important to at least, I think you at large is better than what we've got now, and if you can go to where you've got the member districts, you know, that's even another step that's gonna improve it a long way. But right now, you could really almost like to vote, because if you walk in and there's three positions up and you're trying to get your guy in, you tell everybody, vote for him, don't use the other two votes, and you could swing the election that particular way. This would pretty much eliminate that.
And this does offer protection for the city of Joshua and y'all direct presentation. Uh, I mean, probably a month, we have subdivisions coming in that are thirty five hundred lots, five thousand lots. Godly's growing like crazy, you can just get one of those neighborhood apps on Facebook and they could come in and vote all three people. So it, it really does protect Joshua, protects Godly, protects our rural community, South of Cleveland. It's, it's really there to offer protection for each part of the district. So, and, and we haven't seen any of that, where uh, elections been swayed by large groups within our system. But as we grow and we see these large subdivisions coming in, it could happen. So, it's just something to consider as well, whenever you're considering support.
What are the number of people who's voted in the last two or three elections?
So I think in the, yeah, so I think the twenty nineteen or twenty, I think it was twenty nineteen, we had a few hundred. And then the last two was thirty three, third, in the thirties, and this last one was in the sixties. So, you know, it's, it's usually gonna be low numbers unless someone's got an issue with something. You know, if a subdivision's unhappy with something, they come in and wanna make radical changes and you don't know how that impacts certain people and their services in their area. So again, y'all being unique, you'd wanna protect your interests, and in fact, y'all have wastewater. So you would want that protected in its own way and not you know, having the other groups that don't care about wastewater making the decisions on y'all's behalf, so.
Well, you know, effectively, we have no growth in, in the city. And the biggest complaint is J S A, we can't get water and sewer without investing millions of dollars. And, you know, we're not gonna get any of that money back, so we have to pass it on to the people who are going to buy our units. So three hundred thousand dollar house suddenly becomes a three hundred million dollar house. And that would be three hundred thousand anywhere else. You know, our, our developers are, are not wanting to develop because of the issues that we have with J S A. And, and the, the fees and things that they're being charged, I mean, four million dollars for a Taco Bell and a Whataburger to hook up the water and sewer? I, I mean, how do we expect to continue growth in the city? And, and you want this partnership, you want us to work, work around with you? We, we've got no growth, we, you know, basically, we have what we have now, and we're not gonna get any. And, and that's kind of what we've been told, this is, this is how we're going to go, this is the direction we're going. And there's a lot of anger and animosity towards J S A because of you basically shut down growth in the city. And with the, the CAD doing what they've done with the three year valuations of your property, our budget's basically set for the next three years. We've got nowhere to grow, we've got nothing to do unless we significantly increase the taxes on the people that already pay taxes. That's the only way we're gonna have any way to even take up inflation. Let loan try to improve Dixon Roads, get the additional police officers, we need additional equipment that we need for, for everything. So, so why, why should, should I want to support this for J S A? Give me a reason to support it. I come up with all kinds of reasons not to. I need a reason to support it.
Well, so.
You're, you're.
But, but if I may.
Yes, sir.
We need to do a partnership with this point of life coming in here.
Yeah.
But it's so much down, and you had so much to pay. Eight hundred and seventy three thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
We gave that back to you, to help your growth and help your kind of pay board.
As far as eight hundred thousand dollars going to go, you are telling a developer, he's gotta put in a three million dollar line to be able to get the development going. And that money goes with.
All right. Arlington, here, to support Joshua, Cleveland, right, Godly, Crowded. And that not counting the plant that we're going to have to put in at Granbury, another five hundred million dollars. And by two thousand and thirty five, you're gonna be begging for water.
Everybody in the state is.
That's it.
And I, I mean, it isn't.
That's the reason we're asking for a partnership.
Mayor, uh, you raised a lot of issues and, and certainly not unique to any of the cities. Uh, and I certainly understand exactly where you're coming from. You got limited uh, growth potential, you're getting squeezed from the state of Texas.
No growth potential, right? Yep.
And, and you're being squeezed from the state of Texas, you know, what rules and abilities you have, you're, you got unfunded mandates, I can get all that. Couple of things, the, the impact fees um, that, that you referenced, there are a lot of different impact fees that are project specific, different parts of the county that deal with two component parts, some of it's infrastructure that really doesn't impact you guys, the other part is being able to get the water developed and into the, the county on that. Uh, the C E D, I, I feel your pain on that, I do. And trust me, and I get beat up daily on it, and until the A- Austin fixes that, comes up with a fair, better way, not a lot we can do. Um, and I don't have a short, easy silver bullet answer for you on economic development and the issues that you're facing. But what I can do is, you asked the question, why should I support this? And I can tell you quite frankly and bluntly, what Joe and Josh both said is a real, real danger to y'all's representation on the board, as well as the rural areas. It wouldn't take one election cycle to swing three votes in two election cycles, or somebody, whether it's a developer or Alvarado or some other community that wants to do something that hurts the rest of the district and is not in their best interest. So it's, it is important to be able to have representation for you in the future. Uh, but ultimately, as a rate payer, the other provisions with T C Q is going to save money uh, for the district and will help us to alleviate rate increases and things like it. It's not perfect and it's not a ton, but every bit counts right now, so is it perfect? No, i- it's, it's not. But it's a step in the right direction, we believe, and so that's why we would respectfully request y'all's support. And, and we understand the, the issue with the vote, uh, with, with, with the way that the, the board's voting. You know, at the very minimum, it seems to be uh, pretty straightforward to save the rate payers money and, and save the district money on that, and I understand. And there's a lot of work left to do on the party district, and I, I get that, and we look forward to that, I know Josh and the, the district does building that and, and kind of repairing some of that. Uh, we know that there's some uh, relationships that need mending uh, through years of, of, of issues. I'm very aware of that, I've seen that firsthand. So I would just wanted to recognize that.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions?
So, what we're looking at here is, it's a couple of different things that are rolled into the one support.
Yep.
You're asking for the single member districts. Clarify something for me about the single member districts. Is it, is it gonna be similar to this, where we have just seven places to fill on, on a board, or is it gonna be place one is over place one district only? And it's voted for by those people. So you're talking about making it more like a state representatives.
Like, like a city would work or an ISD.
Like state representatives, where that district votes for that person. Um, you might only get three votes for, for Joe and you know, twenty votes for Glenn and, and either one of them both get elected. That's all fine and dandy, if that, that's you know, the people that show up to vote, but you, you could also hurt that, that population on the board, because you wouldn't have people that were supportive of individuals on the board that could go vote for certain uh, position or, so I feel like it's more kind of hands than releasing. You know, as far as that part of the resolution. I find supporting resolution to, to help you deal with mandates states now. That, that's kind of, kind of, kind of gray among the, the single member districts. And, and how that works, honestly, because like you said, if, if you have one that's for this area out here and you've got it, they could get voted on just real easy and have eight hundred votes easy. But those eight hundred people aren't showing up for the whole election all the time. So it would, it would, I, you know what I'm saying, it, it, I could see it swinging either direction.
Let me ask.
I mean. No, no, I'm done, I'm, I'm done, I will tell you.
If, if the single member district is kind of like county commissioners, every, you have, everybody runs in one place. And this will pretty well guarantee Joshua will have a member on that board. Where we just had an election, my son ran, lost by one vote, and Joshua didn't get any more representation. But with this new one, then we will. Correct?
You will have representation.
Yeah, that's how they set up. Yeah, that's, that, that's the, the, the thing right now, is that point has been decided. That, that is what's going to be done in public hearings and all this, all the if, then, buts, hows, and where it's going, that being decided after this is approved in, in the legislative.
Yeah, the idea is not, what, jump to representation. The idea here is to use the board, single member districts, or Johnson County Special Utility District. It's, it's about the whole system specifically, so Joshua will have representation on the board, I mean, that, that is what it is, so it's, it's not just looking at, well, how many people do Joshua get, how are you gonna split? And all the things, it's the, you know, the county does it, the cities do it, the schools do it.
That's all.
Other special utility districts do, but it's, and it's just ensuring that every minority vote has representation.
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily have to be set up by population, it could be area, geographic area, there's a lot of different ways. But you have to go through the vetting process, make certain you're not diluting minority vote. And there's steps that you gotta go through, it's not just, you just will and nearly go out and do that. And Captain Kidd, you raised a really good point. Every election rocks on, like it historically has, I, I see your point, and I totally understand your point. The concern is, and, and this is what really concerns the district, is what happens if you get, because of the low voter turnout, you get somebody in Alvarado or a development, they do that, they could literally take away Joshua's spot on board by just getting the numbers out, I mean, we all see that, you see it with city elections, I've seen it in Cleveland. You know, the, the number of votes that it takes to swing a, a council is really minimal and even smaller with a special utility district. That's our fear is, is not that the change what is done historically has worked, and worked pretty well. It's with all this growth coming in, to be able to protect our residents and our communities that are here now. That's why we're doing that, is.
Another part of that, another part of that statement is also, would it be eliminating qualified board members? So if, if just for instance, three people live in the same area, we can only hold one membership.
That, that's if you would take away three good board members that are willing to go and settle the board, it could potentially. And that's, that's where I'm gray on.
Well, what do you do?
Yes, sir.
Look at it this way, Joshua is set up as a single member district, or you're not representing a district, there's seven individual places. Dean has everybody represent a particular district. Okay? You, we can do a combination, we can say we're gonna have four member districts, divide the county up into four sections. And say, okay, each one of these sections is gonna get one board. Then we're gonna have three in large. So that makes sure that, you know, if there is continuity on the board that you want to keep, you've got that capability.
Yeah, I, I don't have an exact, there's probably come both ways. Um, you know, we are looking at how we, you know, since two thousand and four, two thousand and four, we became a special utility district, we had three elections. Three since two thousand and four. So we haven't had an issue yet. And there's not an issue, but it's while we're doing this T C Q change, this was another thing that was like, well, if we never warn the ability to do this, it might be a very valuable effect, the district. So that's really the driving factor, so there is some concern about, well, you have a place that goes unfilled because not a lot of interest, but we are seeing as we grow that the interest is increasing. We had six candidates, regardless of where it's from, we had six people that applied to be on. Um, and then we're also working on how our election process is, is it right? We're communicating way. So this year, we've done more communication than what we've done in previous years, so it's trying to open that transparency up, and we expect that will draw more interest uh, in serving. So those are things we're working on, uh, you know, to answer your question.
Let me, let me see how I can help.
I can be, yeah. Um, you know, maybe somebody didn't reveal, or they couldn't, because they'd be running against their natural neighbor. You know, maybe somebody didn't reveal, that they couldn't because they'd be running against their natural neighbor. That, that would happen. If you're, if you're, if you're old, if you're having a boy or you're too old from that district.
And, and if I could follow my.
You're looking at just, it's, what if nobody's in?
This, this was not a directive from the district or the board on the, the voting deal. I suggested while we're doing it, let's clean it up and, and give future boards the opportunity to adjust to whatever we're seeing in reality, to make sure that you got adequate representation across the board on that. So, um.
So you guys don't really have a plan in place yet, right? This is just for.
To give them the opportunity with, with input and feedback and the, the future, future board to look at. As Joe was saying, one of the ideas kicked around is to do a blended approach, not go to all single member districts. Because uh, 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 Councilman Kidd, you raised a good point. You're going to knock out some really good qualified candidates. You still need those at, at large. Um, you know, general positions.
An actual question there is, even though I have no vote in this game, I, but there's a couple of things I think about him. It's actually through March, so stay with it. The, the process that you're talking about um to go through and set up the single member districts. I understand the approval process and all that stuff. Is that process established in law? You have to do public meetings and are these just things y'all are going to do?
Yeah, I, I, uh, Mike, I don't know how to answer in a lot of detail. I don't know specifically. But I do know the government code has a, a lot of, of weigh in on that. I've not looked at, at the specific process as it applies to the S U Ds. The first step is you got to have the ability through how your directors are qualified and how they're elected. That's step one to get the legislature to approve it. Then the, the step two phase, the next phase would be for the board of directors to say, hey, we want to explore this. And they would have to post that.
Which could be a couple of years down the road.
Could be a couple of years. It may never happen. We, we don't know.
Okay.
But there, there's going to be a process, and I do know this board is committed to transparency uh and, and the district is. But there are requirements on that, on public postings and, and so forth. I don't think it is a process where you could just all of a sudden do it, ram ride it through in the middle of the night, so to speak. I think you're going to have a year plus process to get through that. But to answer your specific question, I don't know that the government code lays out specific processes for this.
Okay.
Other than just generally what we also do.
And my second question is, if, let's say that Joe in the area where he lives out at off eleven eighty-seven in that area, say that that's a, one of the areas where you've got a single member district. Um, if nobody's in that, if Joe decides he's had enough and wants to really retire and walk away from all this public service stuff, and nobody signs up, nobody runs, how does that position get filled?
Right, same way it does today currently. The board would fill the unexpired term and, and to finish that unexpired term. So they would do an appointment just like they do currently.
But what if it's not an unexpired? If they just, if Joe quit and.
And you can't find anybody in that specific district. I don't know the answer off the top of my.
But whatever y'all would put together would, would they stipulate you get after address?
An A G opinion on that. I'm, I'm sure that has either happened or can feel relatively certain we could get an A G opinion. But that's, that particular scenario. I don't know the answer off the top.
And finally, um, how often um would, would the board be able to change? So if y'all decided you've got four single member districts and X amount at large and you decided that really wasn't working and you wanted to change it, is there a, is there a certain amount of time?
I don't think so. I don't think there's a limit on changing. I think it would still be governed by the enacting statute and then the government code and that process. I would think the same would be true if they wanted to unwind or go a different direction, they would have to go back and look at that.
Uh, at six thirty-five, we're going to go into recess for consultation with our. It says six seventy-six, we call this meeting back in session. It's kid.
Jerry, would you read the resolution for?
Yeah, I, I moved to approve a resolution supporting the introduction in the current legislative session of a bill admitting subchapter C of chapter seventy-two sixteen and the Texas, Texas Special District Local Laws Code. And opposing that portion of subchapter B, uh, the proposed legislation would provide for the creation of single member districts and/or the election of any director from single member districts. Make that a motion.
Thank you. I've got a motion in my mind, secondly, for Johnny to approve the resolution as stated by the attorney. Is there any discussion? We, my, my thought about this, the T C Q thing is a no-brainer. It makes sense to save the end user money because all that money is the past thirty-nine years. Uh, I'm, I'm concerned about the ambiguity of the single districts and just, hey, we're going to decide land. Uh, I like the idea that if we went to the single member district, it hadn't split, we had the at-large plus the settlements and, and, and all that, that, that makes more sense. Uh, but until we know for sure what that direction is, how, how can we say we're going to go along with it or not? So I, you know, I, I just, I don't think we've got a real question to ask here. And I, I, I think it's something that just has to be done before, before looking. So if nobody has anything else to say, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, it's unanimous. Okay, is there any future agenda items that are requested by the council for the next council meeting? During none, uh, during this meeting at six fifty-eight.